So, an open meeting they said. There's a house.
Yeah, it is coming out.
There's a house.
Yeah, it is coming out.
Would everyone please take a seat? It is five o'clock and it's about to be 5:01. So, as soon as everybody can get settled, I'll call the meeting to order. Oh, okay. Okay, I'm ca- I- this is the meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville, calling the meeting to order. It's April 22nd, 2014. And, um, I will, uh, I think most of you have been here before. A few are not familiar with our procedures. So, I'll just tell you, we'll have first the public hearings. And if you're here to address any of the items that are on the agenda, when that item is called, uh, go to one of the microphones on either side and give your name and address. And, um, and just tell us what you're concerned about. And, um, uh, and we will certainly be glad to hear any comments, um, as they come forward. Uh, and I'd like to start first by introducing the members of the Planning Commission, starting with Angelo.
Angelo Coleman, At Risk LLC.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nelson. I'm a transportation engineer.
Channel Shewski, I represent District Three, City Council.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor Battle's office.
Vince Dickens, Army Contracts.
I'm Janet Watson, retired builder and developer.
Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Peggy Richard, Realtor.
Kyle Collins, Colliers International.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Director.
And we also have Claudia Anderson from the Legal Department. And then other members of the staff in the Planning Department here. Um, our first item of business is adoption of the minutes, March of March 25th, 2014. Have you had a chance to read those minutes?
Who should approve?
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, public hearings, uh, our first item is Calhoun Community College Place, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding that item? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item two, Goodwin Park, Phase One, a re-subdivision of Lot Three of a re-subdivision of Lot Two and Three of Goodwin Park subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Goodwin Park? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item three, Heritage Brook subdivision, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of a portion of Track Two of Heritage Brook subdivision, Phase One. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Heritage Brook? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item four, Huntington Place, Third Edition, a minor, and that has been withdrawn. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Huntington Place, Third Edition? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. That public hearing, I think we hold that, yes, I'm sorry, that public hearing is not closed. It's held open until, um, the next meeting in May, at which time it will come up again. And, uh, public hearing will be held again on that, on that date. Uh, item five, Inspiration Point on Green Mountain, Phase Three, a re-subdivision of Lot Thirty-four and Lot Ten of Inspiration on Green Mountain, a re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property, and a re-subdivision of Track Forty of Inspiration Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track Thirty-five and Lot Nineteen of Inspiration on Green Mountain, a re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Inspiration on Green Mountain? Hearing no comment, public hearings closed. Item six is Ledge Stone, a re-subdivision of Track Seven and Eight of Old Gurley Farm, formerly Grand Manor. It's been withdrawn. But if there's someone here to speak tonight regarding Ledge Stone, uh, we are having public hearing. Hearing no comment, we continue that public hearing until next month. Um, item seven is Overton. Is there anyone here regarding Overton? That item has been withdrawn also. And, um, and we will continue the public hearing until next month. South Gate, Phase Two, which has also been withdrawn. But if there's anyone here to speak regarding South Gate, Phase Two, that hearing is, is, is going on tonight and will be held again next month. Hearing no comment, we carry that over until next month. Wilson Cove, Phase One, again, this one has been withdrawn. But if you're here to speak regarding Wilson Cove, you may do so now. Uh, that hearing is carried over to next month. Our next item is location, character, and extent. Uh, the Burrit Schoolhouse. Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Reed.
Good evening. Can you sort of explain what this is all about?
I, I will, but you, you, if you would, I know, we all know you and, but you know our tradition.
Jackie Reed.
Okay.
Jack Coleman, Drive today.
See, she'll be moving now. Thank you, Jack, thank you. Uh, okay, Burrit Schoolhouse, uh, do we have someone here who, Michael, can you?
Um, my biggest question is, if it's concerning budget and money and we're building it, I think this in Twickenham Square where that bridge is being built needs to be sent to the City Council meeting. Do you all take any of these items from this planning department and take them to the council meetings to be voted on? Or is this their final stop tonight, once you vote on it?
No, ma'am, they go to the City Council on most items, they go to the City Council.
This.
Location, character, and extent doesn't, it's, it's final here, tonight.
It's final here tonight?
But we do not vote on the funding.
You do not, what?
The funding of this, um, item isn't before this commission. It's just the location, character, and extent of the project.
But they are building a building.
They are building a building.
But you are okay in that tonight, that they're building a building.
We're discussing the location of the building, the character of the building, and the extent, not necessarily the funding of the building. I, in.
But will it ever go to the City Council, is my question.
I don't know that it's being funded by City, you can.
Just briefly, Claudia Anderson, City Attorney's Office. With location, character, and extent, the Planning Commission would make a decision, but it is appealable. In this instance, it would be appealable to the City, City Council that would then takes action, but only in the case of an appeal. Would the City Council be called upon to look into, into the location, character, and extent?
Who would appeal it?
Uh, if it's denied, it would then be appealed.
As long as the city's not funding everything, if the city starts funding things and it stops here, I think it really needs to go into the City Council. They need to be accountable.
Uh, we, we don't, the Planning Commission doesn't deal with funding at all. It, uh, it would go at some point, if they, if the, um, if Burrit would require money to build this that they don't have, then they would have to go to the City Council and ask for that money in the budget.
Well, what caught my attention, it's got developer out there. Anytime you've got developer out there, the City of Huntsville, that really concerns me. It's kind of like that condos over there, top of that parking garage. Developer COH, building condos. This, anything, it's got developer COH on it, that means something's going to be built by the city. If that, unless I'm, I'm not too smart, but that catches my attention pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
I'm Greg Campbell.
Okay.
We're working for the Burrit on this project. Um, I don't know everything about the funding of it. I do know that the funding for our services was not from city funds. And I have been told that the Burrit is in the process of a capital campaign fundraising for this. I can't tell you whether they're counting on any city funds or not, but the front end work that we're doing is not city funds.
Thank you. Thank, anything else, Ms. Reed?
I don't guess there's anything else I can say unless I want to bring it up before the City Council. There's where they need to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else to speak regarding the Burrit Schoolhouse? Uh, hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Uh, item B, Huntsville High School fencing. Is there anyone here regarding Huntsville High School fencing? To speak. Hearing no comment, public hearing is closed. Item C, Twickenham Square Pedestrian Bridge. Yes, ma'am.
Same thing.
Okay, we already have.
Same name, same address, and the same deal. City of Huntsville is a developer. That gets my attention pretty quick. What are they doing?
Again, we, we, the plans are here and, and I don't know if the architects, is the architect here on this? Yes. Um, you're welcome to look at the plans on the architect, that the architect has. But as far as funding is concerned, Planning Commission has nothing to do with funding. We're looking at location, character, and extent. Where is it? What does it look like? And how, how much is it going to impact that area specifically? So, um, uh.
Where is this bridge located?
My name is Patrick Weber. I'm with Smith G Studio out of Nashville. We're the architects of the Twickenham Square Apartments. And this is a bridge that connects the, one of the apartment buildings that is currently under construction down at, uh, the Twickenham Square Development. That's near the corner of St. Clair Avenue and Gallatin Street. Uh, it connects, allows residents living in the apartment building access to parking spaces that are leased by the developer from the City of Huntsville, uh, in the city-built parking garage.
You don't know the cost, and I don't know the budget. Is this the last stop for this right here, first and last stop for this bridge?
For the, as far as location, character.
I'd like for this to be appealed to the City Council Board. If they're building, COH developer means they're going to develop it. And if you all pass this, it will never get to the City Council. The developers can head out. They've got their architects here, they've done doing their homework. And the people and the public needs to know what's going on with taxpayers' dollars. I'm sorry.
To clear something up on the developer, the developer's actually Twickenham Square Venture LLC. It's, uh, it's just tied to the City Huntsville Parking Garage. So, that was a mistake on the agenda.
Okay, the, the, um, uh, did you understand that? That the agenda has a typo on it? It says COH, but it is Twickenham Square Developers.
Can I trust you? I don't trust nobody when it comes to taxpayers' dollars. Well, our question is the City Council meeting, you can be there to answer it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Michael. Okay, is there any further comment on Twickenham Square Pedestrian Bridge? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item, uh, eleven is, is street name change. We have a couple of those. Uh, A is Pentastar Drive Southwest to Remington Trail Southwest. Is there anyone here to make a comment on that?
My only question is, someone came to my work and asked me and told me this was on the agenda. That's where I get all my information, that's why I'm working against. They read agendas and they flag me on outskirts of the city. That, if the city owns the property, which the city does, I understand, um, can they just change the name to anything they want to?
Well, that's.
Maybe some of y'all can answer that one.
That's, that's why we're here tonight. There's been a petition to change the name. And we're considering that petition to change the name. They can't just change it to anything they want. Uh, it has to be approved through the nine-one-one department and through, to make sure that it doesn't interfere with it, that it's not the same as any other street names, uh, and, and meet some other standards. But, um, but we're here to consider whether it is acceptable to change it, Pentastar Drive Southwest to Remington Trail Southwest.
I don't have no problem. But if you all vote tonight to change it, that's in concrete. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, I got to keep the Planning Department wondering what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, any further comment on Pentastar Drive changing to Remington Trail? Hearing no further comment, public hearings closed. Item B, Inspiration on Green Mountain Subdivision, Verdant Circle to Sylvia's Way. Is there anyone here to comment on changing the name from Verdant Circle to Sylvia's Way? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item twelve, uh, is a petition to remove plat restriction from Parker Ridge Estates Third Edition, and that has been withdrawn. Um, uh, is there anyone here who came to comment on it? Hearing no comment, we continue that, uh, hearing until the next Planning Commission. Item thirteen is zoning. Lisa, would you?
Yeah, we have two annexation zonings on the agenda tonight. And we also have some new maps tonight. Y'all can decide if you want to keep the old maps, use the new maps, or a combination of both. So, the first one we have on the agenda is the Johnston Annexation Zoning. Here we have our traditional zoning map. This is on our official zoning map base maps. The area that we're talking about here is the hatched area. The proposed zoning is Residence One District for the 0.99 acres. And this is located on the west side of Doug Hill Road and north of Rain Tree Road. The proposed zoning is Residence One District, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning in this area. So, this is our traditional zoning map. And then we also now have them on Google Maps. So, you can see where in the world this is. So, here we go. Again, the, uh, the colors on this map are coded to the different zoning districts. Um, so this entire area that you see here is Residence One in this gold color. This yellow highlighted area is the same as the hatched area you saw on the previous map. So, this is the Johnston Annexation Zoning for 0.99 acres.
Uh, can you, uh, move your cursor onto Rain Tree Road? Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone here to comment on the Johnston Annexation Zoning? Hearing no comments, the public hearing is closed.
The next item we have is the Freeman Annexation Zoning. And this is located on the north side of Mohawk Road. And west of Taylor Road, it is 1.16 acres. The proposed zoning is Residence One A District, which is consistent with the other properties there along Mohawk Road. And I accidentally closed that out, so that's going to take a minute. And here we are, we're in the same location again. The yellow outlined area is the property to be zoned, 1.16 acres. And you see here the color-coded zoning in this area. So, it would be consistent with the other properties there along Mohawk Road.
Now, from, from this Google map, we can see a lot in the, in the area. Show us where Walmart is, can you?
Right there.
Right there, okay, okay.
So, we'll take an unofficial vote, whether you want both or just Google.
Uh, do we have another, we only have two, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's go ahead and finish the public hearing on this and then we'll, we'll, but keep, leave that up. Um, is there anyone here to speak regarding Freeman Annexation Zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Okay, what do y'all think? Okay, shall, shall we take a straw poll right now?
Sure, why not?
Okay, well, we have.
You can have either or, both, whatever you wish. I can't hear you.
Can I make a request that prior to each council meeting, that the items on the agenda that are tied to specific locations are published as a KML file that we can download onto our individual copies of Google Earth at home?
That's going to require some coordination. Um, well, that's something we're certainly trying. As you can see, this is the first night that we've even done this to make sure it works.
It looks great, and it's wonderful to have this level of context and color coding.
Because right now, this particular map only exists on this computer. It's, it's not an internet map that you can go grab. This was created by our GIS department, it's only on this computer. So, to create a link to it, I'm not quite sure how we can do that.
It's, it's not a link, it's basically an extra button or function that you use to spit out a layer that you can just put on the city website along with the minutes or the agenda. And people could download it if they wanted to.
So, again, it's only on this computer. So, it's going to take some coordination with our ITS and GIS departments, but we can certainly work toward that.
Sure.
What do you think, Brenda? Brenda?
Oh, Michelle, yes, Michelle, what do you think?
I had her on my computer to go, my bad. Michelle, what do you think?
Well, um, I talked to planning staff about, um, making our maps a little more user-friendly. We noticed that, um, we got lots of questions about where is this, what is this next to, where's the bank and where's the Walmart? So, um, I'm pleased with what you've come up with.
Well, I just liked the fact that you were able to ask, where's the Walmart? And I'd rather it be something than Walmart, but I'm glad you, you know, mentioned Walmart. That actually helped me where it is. Because I didn't have a clue where it is, so.
Well, we do have the capability with the system for split screens. So, we could actually have, begin with the one document on both screens and then just remove it from one and then pull Google Maps up there. Actually, this way, because we are live on television and it's recorded, it allows Blake in the control room to pull up the images as well and broadcast them.
If, we're not live tonight.
But the takeaway is, we can look at what my partner in crime here is asking about, because I like that idea too.
Okay, let's, let's just have, just so we can go on with the, with the medium, because we have a couple of other public hearings, but let's just.
Why don't we say for now we'll do both?
Okay.
And, um, we'll see how we can do a split screen. We'll work with, um, Blake to make sure that we can do that.
But I think this is great.
Okay, great, good.
I'm excited, so, okay. Uh, Lisa, back to you.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, zoning. Okay, zoning-
Is the public hearing closed for this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think I did, let me do it, just in case I did. Is there anyone here to speak to the Freeman Annexation Zoning with regard to that? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item C is zoning ordinance amendment, Residence Two-B District Regulations.
Okay, this is an, uh, zoning ordinance amendment, this will add single-family attached dwellings as a permitted use uh, to the Residence Two-B District Regulations. Uh, this amendment adds single-family attached dwellings, also known as townhomes, uh, to the Residence Two-B District. Single-family attached dwellings were first added to the zoning ordinance in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, went back and reviewed the meeting minutes from the zoning committee and planning commission. They added the townhomes to Residence Two and Residence Two-A Districts, but they did not mention adding them to Residence Two-B Districts. The main concern at the time was that they would not be added to a single-family detached dwelling, uh, districts. So for some reason, they were, and never added to Residence Two-B Districts. Um, so at this time, we'd like to add them. Residence Two-B District, interestingly enough, already includes semi-detached dwellings, which are two-unit townhomes. We've had developers in the past request that we add townhomes to the Residence Two-B Districts. Otherwise, they would have to rezone the property to do that. And so that we'd like to add that at this time.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone here who would like to address, uh, now, wait a minute, we're, we're going for, this is our public hearing tonight, okay. Uh, is there anyone here who would like to address the zoning ordinance amendment, Residence Two-B District Regulations that, um, Ms. Leto just described? Hearing no public comment, hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, non-conforming lots of record.
This amends the zoning ordinance article seventy-four, non-conforming lots, non-conforming uses of land, non-conforming structures, and non-conforming uses of structures and premises. Uh, this is section seventy-four point one, non-conforming lots of record. And what this amendment would do would add definitions and regulations concerning non-conforming lots of record and unified lots. And we see here, this is article seventy-four as it appears in the zoning ordinance. Uh, the changes and the additions are shown here in green in honor of Earth Day, which is today. So you see here the new definitions we have for affiliate, common ownership, contiguous lot, lot, non-conforming lot of record, and unified lot. And we're gonna come back to unified lot, that's an important addition to this amendment. And again, everything you see in green is either a change or something new. The language that you see here for non-conforming lots of record, which may be used for a permitted use provided the following four items, this is already existing in the zoning ordinance, as far as the minimum lot width and lot area and the other requirements that you see there. Where we get to the unified lots and contiguous lots language is here on these next paragraphs. Where a non-conforming lot of record is under common ownership with a contiguous lot, on or after the effective date of this section, it shall be deemed to be merged into a single lot for the regulatory purpose of this ordinance, subject to each or the following. So what that means is if you have two non-conforming lots immediately adjacent to each other under common ownership, they have to, uh, follow these regulations. Number one, the contiguous lot shall be deemed merged into a single lot to the extent necessary to create a lot that is sufficient to meet the minimum lot width and lot area requirements for the given district without leaving a substandard residual lot. Where a substandard residual lot or lots would be left by the merger, then the residual lot or lots will be included in the merger to form a single lot. So that's saying if you have two lots that are existing non-conforming lots, and you want, you have a, say, a house built on one and your garage is on the other, and you decide to tear down the garage so that you can sell that lot, you cannot leave a substandard lot. Both of those lots have to meet the density regulations for the zoning district that they're in. And the next one is where contiguous lots, at least one of which is non-conforming lot of record or under common ownership, and each have a principal structure on the lot, then the non-conforming lot of record may retain its status as such and not be deemed merged into a single lot, but only as long as a principal structure is not abandoned. Now, this is in a case where you have two non-conforming lots, and you have a principal structure or the primary home, let's say, on each lot. Unless you intentionally abandon or destruct, demolish that structure, those two structures can remain. And if for some reason they're demolished by a natural occurrence, then you can build it back. And then that lastly, unified lots, unified lots under common ownership are deemed to be merged. And we'll go back to that definition of unified lots. Unified lot means two or more contiguous lots that are so integrated through common or dependent structures or reliance on the other to meet setback requirements as to form a unified whole. You see this a lot in the older neighborhoods, where you'll have houses on these smaller lots, and the house may be built across two or three lots. And what happens is sometimes people want to tear down that home and build three smaller lots. Well, the main emphasis for this zoning ordinance amendment is to protect the character and integrity of our neighborhoods. And so if you tear down one of the homes, you have got to make sure that the existing home meets the setbacks by itself on its lot, without relying on the other lot to meet the setbacks. So for instance, if the lot, if the house is built on the lot line, then it obviously can't meet the setbacks without having the other lot. So this just keeps the, the character and integrity of the neighborhoods consistent, and so that you don't have a lot of tear downs with people trying to go in and build a lot of smaller homes on these old lots.
Is there anyone to comment on the zoning ordinance amendment, non-conforming lots of record, Mrs. Reed?
I sure would like to have a copy of this. It'd almost take a lawyer to figure this thing out. Because I've seen homes over there on Hermitage Avenue on the street where my daughter lives. Two lots, they sell one, buy one, build it, and squeeze them in, and so the non-conforming and the conforming's got me all confused. Are we making it better than what we had it? Are we making it better for the homeowners or the developers, or where are we headed with what we're doing, is what I'm trying to find out.
Well, this is protecting the neighborhoods.
You are?
Yes. That's the, the main reason for doing this, is to protect our neighborhoods so that they keep their existing character and integrity without having houses that are out of character and out of size, and that do not meet the setbacks that need to be met in those districts.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is there any other comment?
I actually have a question about this. Um, for the non-conforming lots, do many of these fall under the residential two-B districts? And would if, if you had, for instance, several conforming lots together, would it, it would now be allowed to build single-family attached homes, which then would negate some of those side setback?
Yeah, it would depend, this all goes back to the, whatever the underlying zoning district is. Um, so in a, and of course, in a Residence Two-B, Two-B district, if this goes through and you can build townhomes, a two-B district, like a two-A district, allows all housing types. Mainly what we're looking at are the single-family
Okay.
detached neighborhoods.
Uh, is there any further comment from the public? Hearing no further comment, public hearings closed. We will discuss that more when it comes up on our, um, uh, on, on the, uh, agenda later. Um, uh, and there's nothing wrong with asking questions at this point too, but, um, uh, but we will have a chance to discuss further. Um, okay, our, uh, next item is subdivisions and, um, Kimberly Battle's not here tonight. Uh, is there someone, I think she asked someone to give the subdivision, was it? He's not here, okay, Vance, would you give-
I'm on zoning, I'm covering zoning.
You're on zoning, okay, who was at the subdivision meeting, Jeff? Okay, um, Gary was there? Are you on the subdivision committee?
I'm not, but I was present.
Okay, um. Kyle, are you on the subdivision committee? Okay, would you, would you just present, this is the subdivision, subdivision committee recommendations as, as, as they were voted at that meeting, so if you would just read those off, and one by one, we'll vote on them.
All right, item number one, Calhoun Community College Place, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lot one-three and the non-radio lot line between lots one slash three and two slash three.
Okay, the, did we hear a second, a, a motion, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Item number two, Goodwin Park, oh, also presented for final approval on three lots.
Is it in order, Michelle, for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Okay, do I have a motion? Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Kyle?
Item number two, Goodwin Park Phase One, re-subdivision of Lot Three and a re-subdivision of Lot Two and Three of Goodwin Park Subdivision, a minor. The committee recommends a relayout approval of two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot between lots one and two.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Also presented for final approval on two lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Heritage Brook Subdivision Phase Two, re-subdivision of a portion of Track Two of Heritage Brook Subdivision Phase One. The committee recommends preliminary approval of thirty-five lots.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Inspiration on Green Mountain Phase Three, re-subdivision of Track Thirty-four and Lot Ten of Inspiration on Green Mountain. Re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property, and a re-subdivision of Track Forty of Inspiration Phase Two. A re-subdivision of Track Thirty-five and Lot Nineteen of Inspiration on Green Mountain. A re-subdivision of Track One, Green Mountain Auction Property. This is forwarded without recommendation pending signature approval from the Madison County Health Department.
Do we have that approved?
Signature approval has been received, and it is in order for relayout and re-preliminary approval on thirty-six lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot between Lots Seventy-two and Seventy-three, and Lots Seventy-eight through Eighty-three.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Um, that was on relayout, on re-preliminary.
I do.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries on both.
Item number five, Legacy Cove Subdivision Two, re-subdivision of Williams Wheeler Estates, Track Three, of re-subdivision of Williams Wheeler Estates, presented for final approval on sixty-seven lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order for final approval with the sidewalks to be installed by April twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, and with improvements installed by April twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Uh, is there a motion? Uh, is there any discussion on final approval for Legacy Cove Subdivision as presented? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Meadows at Hampton Cove Phase One, presented for final approval on seventy-three lots.
Is it in, is it in order for final?
It is in order for final approval of sidewalks to be installed on April, by April twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, and improvements installed by April twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Uh, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, location, character, and extent.
Location, character, and extent.